Good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's regular commission meeting, Tuesday, January 28. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil, here. Commissioner Romero? Uh, Commissioner Brush, here. Vice Chair Romero?
brush
Chair Mascherinius?
Here.
Um, please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Zillia symbol, representative among united cultures. And if we could have a moment of silence, I know we lost a few community members, especially, I don't know, topics from the West area than anybody else we've lost here recently. Thank you. Moving right along to item number five, the approval of the agenda.
Chair, the people, the agenda, that's in progress.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Vehil and a second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascherinius?
Yes.
Moving right along to public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes and no action may be taken on any of these comments. Anybody wishing to speak? Come on up.
Hi. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Sacks. Can you hear me okay?
Mike Lottzky.
So, okay.
Make sure it turns green.
Okay. Okay. I'm Sacks. I'm the Secretary of the Rancho de Taos Neighborhood Association. So, I'm here to represent the Neighborhood Association and really, are we getting feedback?
You are. Just kind of, if it doesn't sense.
Okay.
Don't step too close.
How's that? Is that good?
It's a little bit better.
Okay. So, I'm here to consider discussions within the county administration about possibly eliminating neighborhood associations as a part of local governance. And so, I came to support these increasingly rare and endangered associations. We recognize the necessity of revising the current land use regulations to make them more user-friendly and more efficient, while also protecting the unique social, cultural, and environmental assets that we have within this county. But I'm curious as to what's meant under item four, under the Land Use Code organizations in the presentation that we're gonna soon hear from the planning consultants. The language reads, "Replace neighborhood zones with conventional zones." So, I'd like to talk about that. The neighborhood associations were a great idea when they originally incorporated into county planning models. Neighborhood associations in Taos County were designed to be intermediaries between local residents and planners during the creation of land use rules, channeling information to help with decision-making. They provided valuable local input. They have a standing to advise on permitting and zoning issues within their area for reasons that are too complicated to examine in a brief discussion. Most associations in the county have ceased to be active. They're creating, that's creating a communication gap between residents and decision-makers. So, we need to address what these associations were intended to do, why most have gone silent, and what changes are needed to reinvigorate these associations and encourage county-wide participation. As the county's comprehensive plan and land use codes are updated, it's crucial to reintegrate neighborhood associations into the planning process. Planning consultants have already engaged with contractors and developers. Now, it's essential to have meaningful discussions with current and former neighborhood association representatives. The neighborhood associations play a vital role in planning and zoning. The Rancho's Neighborhood Association requests that we sit down for a work-study session with the involvement of administrators and planning consultants to address what these associations were intended to do, to figure out why many have gone silent and what changes are needed to ensure their success. Thanks for your time. And I'm providing a bunch of copies, just transcripts of this, that I'd like to pass out to all the commissioners. And also, we have provided a copy of the document that was created when the ordinance creating the Las Comunidades de la Vía de los Rancho's, traditional historic community, was created by ordinance in this room a couple of years ago. And we'd like that provided to the planning consultants so they can see an example of what the neighborhood associations can do. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Go ahead. Come on up.
Good morning, commissioners. I am the vice president of the Rancho's Neighborhood Association. My name is Rose Disgeorges. We are a vital resource for the dissemination of information to the five communities that comprise the traditional historic district, Rancho's, Talpa, Yano, Corriera, and Los Cordovas. We have a wide distribution list, so much so that we had to develop a resolution regarding what information we will disseminate. We were getting that many requests. But an organization meant to implement changes, like the changes to the land use regulation, reaches out only to contractors and builders. Seems like it's just too onerous or burdensome to actually get input from the people you supposedly represent. This whole process is anything but transparent. We would like to know who provided the list of contacts for this organization for the feedback. And we would like examples of community feedback that were implemented into the current working copy of the land use regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Is there anybody online? Okay. Thank you, guys. Moving right along to item number seven. Approval of the December 17, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the December 17, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Brush. Commissioner Brush made a motion, second by Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascherinius?
Yes. Moving along to item B, approval of the January.
I'm speaking. Hello? I raise my hand to speak at public comment.
Okay. Give us a second.
Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. Please identify yourself.
My name is Cardinal Rieger. You need my address?
No, just name. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Cardinal Rieger, and I concur with both of the individuals who just spoke regarding neighborhood associations. Thank you very much for those two individuals who were being here. I agree with everything who said. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anybody else out there? Okay. Moving along to item B, approval of the January 7, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the minutes of the January 7, 2025, meeting.
Do we have? Okay. Motion by Commissioner Romero, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascherinius?
Yes. Thank you. Moving right along to item eight, presentations regarding the updates to Taos County and land use regulation and subdivision regulations. Steve Bernstein, project manager for Architectural Research Consultants, Inc. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I'm pleased to be here with you, and I'm with my colleagues, my teammates, who are also going to help with this presentation, Mark White and Caitlin Cameron. And I'm with Architectural Research Consultants. They are with White Smith Cusino. We'd like to give you kind of an overview of our assessment of the land use code and subdivision regulations this morning, fairly high level. We won't go into a lot of detail. But what I'd like to do is, and please advance the slide. Okay. Okay. So, this is just our agenda. Next slide, please. So, I'd just like to introduce the project. We did have the opportunity to meet with the commission on December 4, but this is our first time presenting in the public. So, the county had identified the need to update the codes. They're fairly old. They have been incrementally added to over many years. And, yeah, so, without going into great detail there. So, we were hired back in August to help and work with county staff to undertake that update. And as I mentioned, ARC and White Smith Cusino are the consultant team working with you and the county staff. The goals for the update are to create a unified code that is more simple and more user-friendly, to encourage smart growth, affordable housing, environmental sensitivity, allowing for some growth that meets locals' needs, to create a more predictable, a more objective set of rules, to reduce the review requirements for smaller projects so that larger projects continue to have plenty of scrutiny, but the smaller projects are somewhat easier to get through, that have less impact. Next slide, please. So, the principles for successful codes include clarity, predictability, consistency, and fairness. And we've, you know, these are just guiding principles that encourage codes to be in plain English and easy to navigate, with rules that are fairly executed. And just that it's a more predictable situation. It's not as much of the case-by-case kind of review that we currently have in the county system. Next slide, please. So, our work program, as you can see, we're still in the first task of code assessment. We'll prepare a code assessment report after we've done some additional stakeholder meetings after this meeting today. And then, we'll go into the code outline, which is task two of our project. There will be fairly detailed, kind of a blueprint for how the code should be organized, how the sections that are currently in your code are kind of reshuffled around and updated. And then, we get into the more laborious part of it, of the code rewrite, which will take several months before we have a draft code that will then go through additional review. Public involvement is a component that really started in December and will continue through October. We intend to have a community survey in addition to the stakeholder meetings that we've been conducting and will continue to conduct sometime when we have a little more solid draft materials. And finally, then, to bring it to the planning commission and bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners for your review at work sessions as well as public hearings. Next slide, please. And the next slide. Thank you. So, the assessment process has consisted of conducting meetings with staff we've met fairly regularly to identify the statutes that are relevant to the land use regulations, and Mark has done a good job at that, to review and critique the various ordinances. And we're deep into that process at this point. And to review the county comprehensive plan. And as you know, you have an adopted plan from 2017, and you're in the process of revising that. So, we're looking at draft materials from the new plan in addition. And then, finally, to prepare the code assessment report. Next slide. So, this is just a list of the ordinances that we have been looking at. And you can see that in addition to the subdivision regulations, the land use code, which is the zoning, we've been looking at the amendments to that, as well as the standalone ordinances that are related to land use that should be incorporated into the code. Next slide. So, I'm gonna start this, but I do wanna tag team with Mark and Caitlin on the overview. So, well, actually, I think I'll just ask Mark if he would.
Sure. Thank you, members of the commission. I'm Mark White, and I wanna talk just briefly about some of the things that jumped out at us as we started going through your land use code, your subdivision regulations, and all the ordinances that Steve showed you earlier on the slide. And the first one was the way you use discretion in permitting development. It's far beyond what we've seen in most codes that we've worked with. Just about everything but a single-family dwelling requires discretionary approval. We're not saying that we have to completely get rid of discretionary approval for everything, but we wanna look at rightsizing it. You know, where does it belong? We need to do this for everything. And especially if we introduce, as Steve's gonna talk about in a little bit, a more conventional set of zoning districts. You'll have some things that are by right and some things that are discretionary. So, this is something we wanna reduce when we can and solve things through standards that are in the code that the community broadly agrees upon, and then revise the standards that apply to things. So, solve the problems that way instead of solving things on a case-by-case basis. Some things will still need that kind of discretionary approval, but not everything. And the other thing that jumped out at us, if it wasn't obvious from all the different ordinances that are scattered here and there throughout the county's various codes, is that you have procedures, you have standards, and you have definitions that are scattered throughout the code. We wanna unify those. We wanna put the procedures in one place so everybody knows what the workflow is. Somebody starting a business knows how to get it started. Somebody who wants to comment on an application, like the folks who spoke earlier, will know when it's, you know, when they can show up and comment and provide their input on things that are happening. We wanna put the standards in a logical place so that people know what the rules of the game are when they're developing here in the county. And we wanna pull standards out of definitions. That's just a bad drafting practice. We find that from time to time here in the regulations. So, we wanna make sure that we have standards that are clear and easier to understand for everybody. Again, whether you're developing here or whether you live down the street from something that's happening. You wanna know whether the rules are properly applied. So, we wanna make sure that that's transparent across the board. Next slide, please. A couple of other observations. Your definitions need to be updated for a variety of reasons. Some of them are just old and just need an update for best practices. Some need compliance with state and federal law, et cetera. Just things change. Anytime you adopt an ordinance, even if it's great, the minute you adopt it. And there's a lot of things the county does well. And so, this, you know, we're not here because everything you're doing is bad. We're here because the things you're doing need an update. If for no other reason, you're doing a brand-new comprehensive plan. Law has changed from time to time. And a lot of what you need just needs to be organized for logical consistency so that people can find the information they're looking for when they open the code and et cetera. There's a lot of redundancy. As you know, and I'm sure you've all, I'm sure, read the land use code. You've read the subdivision regulations. There's a lot of redundancy, a lot of very long standards that you'll find in both the land use code and the subdivision regulations. So, we wanna put those in one place. So, not only is it easier to read, but we don't just repeat things over and over, which makes it harder to use. We wanna create a lot more tables and charts and illustrations to make sure that the ordinance is clearer and easier to understand for everyone. And we also wanna grapple with the issue of affordable housing. You know, how we can facilitate affordable housing in a way that's appropriate for the unincorporated areas of Taos County. And so, looking for incentives that make sense, that can reduce unnecessary costs, but still make sure that the housing fits in with the neighborhood and that sort of thing. Next slide, please. And so, what we're looking at is a unified code, number one, that combines your subdivision and land use codes under one document. Steve, was this, was this one, do you want me to, you wanna jump in on number three, or do you want me to cover this?
I'll jump in.
Okay. We're, like I said, we're gonna create tables and charts, more white space on a page instead of long legalistic paragraphs, which are hard to read. And we wanna create a new framework for conventional zones. And what you heard earlier is something we're still talking through. And there's no final decision made by anyone on how that's going to work, but a more conventional set of regulations is something that seems more workable for the county. So, I'm gonna turn back over to Steve.
So, just to emphasize the point that Mark made about there's a lot of good things in your code. I think that Taos County's subdivision regulations and land use code together are probably the most comprehensive of any rural county in New Mexico that, at least I can think of. So, you've done a good job over the years of identifying a lot of concerns and trying to address them. And so, again, just to kind of reiterate, it's important to better organize those, to try to get more objective standards so it's not quite as subjective. And part of that really is to create a more conventional zoning system with residential, commercial, industrial, probably a mixed-use zone, an agricultural zone. And all of those are going to take some thinking through to be sure that we've got the right densities, the right uses, the right dimensional requirements. You've got a problem now with some of the areas, as we understand, in El Prado and Los Rancho's, where you have small lot sizes, so it's difficult to meet the setback requirements. So, if you have a conventional zone, that would make it much easier to be able to develop or redevelop. So, that's a very important aspect, and we're working it through. We don't have a set solution to this. With regard to the existing community and neighborhood zones, we're not proposing to do anything with the neighborhood associations. I agree with the public comments that they're very valuable to have groups that are looking at their communities in detail. But the zones themselves have just a lot of, I think I'd call them flaws, you know, that they're very difficult to implement in those two areas. And with conventional zones and with overlay districts such as architectural review stand, architectural review, much of what has been accomplished can be accomplished, I believe. But we're looking at it. You know, it's not, it's not set that we're going to be sure to replace those, but that's the important one. And then, the development standards, just to kind of finish up this slide. We wanna evaluate them. If your height limits are correct, if your lot coverage percentages are still most appropriate. You've certainly done a lot in terms of wildlife interface and steep hillsides, but we just wanna work with staff to take a look at those. And the last one, revamp the planned unit development. It's necessary, and probably any code, to have that type of allowance for developers to propose their own standards if they're going to be clustering housing and creating additional open space. And you've got a fairly simple PUD or Planned Unit Development ordinance at this time or regulations. And we just wanna be sure that they still function as well as possible, that you've got the proper guidelines to kind of make sure that those projects are as appropriate as they need to be. Next slide.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Caitlin Cameron, and I work with Mark at White Smith Cusino. And the next step in our process, as we are wrapping up the assessment process, is moving into creating an outline for the unified code. So, this slide shows an example of basically what are best practices right now for unified code organization. So, this list reflects a kind of outline that we would start from, bringing in these various components of the different ordinances into this one document. And the intention here is to be able to reference different sections depending on what the user is looking for. So, you wouldn't have to read the code from beginning to end. You would be able to flip between sections if they're organized in a way like this that divides the zones and the development standards, the procedural elements. And then, there's also in this slide just a representation of how illustrations and tables might be incorporated. This is not necessarily representative of what we're gonna do for your code, but just to give a sense for some of the ways those elements are brought in.
Next slide, please. So, this slide is presenting a table that crosswalks the development standards by topics for residential zoning clearances and commercial zoning clearances. And I don't wanna go through it in detail. It's hard to read. But just to show that by grouping the standards by topics allows us to look for more consistency between them and to make it easier to navigate, I think, for users of the code. And I think I'll leave it at that. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Next slide, please. We're also incorporating the subdivision regulations into this unified document. One of the biggest things is, again, making sure we don't have duplicate standards repeated throughout the ordinance. It's bad enough when you have to read them once. They're long and they're complicated. You don't want to read those standards and then go out and operate heavy machinery. It's a lift. But it's, let's at least just have them in one place. Try to make them more readable, more coherent and understandable for people who use the code and want to comment on things. So we want to remove those duplications, whether they're in definitions, whether they're in an appendix, whether they're in something else. And so incorporating all that into one document is, is what we're getting to. Next slide, please. We're looking at how we incorporate and right-size the standards for different, the different subdivision categories, which are mentioned in state law. And some of those are a function of state law, but some of them need different standards based on their size, their complexity, and et cetera. So we want to make sure that those are right-sized. We want to look at the submittal requirements to make sure that the county has all the information it needs when it's making the decision about a subdivision approval, but not asking for too much, not asking for things that you don't need. For, for example, for a small subdivision. And we're also looking at the exemptions for subdivisions. A lot of those are, they're in state law, so we're kind of, we have to abide by them, but we can also clarify them and make, making sure we don't go further than we need to with those exemptions. Next slide, please. And again, Steve, you want to cover this one?
Okay. But just one comment about the exemptions. Family transfers are one of the exemptions to the definition of subdivision that have been flagged by staff and in various meetings that we've had as being somewhat problematic. So that will be one of the areas that we'll want to be looking at in more detail. So other ordinances include the Upper Las Colonias Community Neighborhood Zone and the Stagecoach Community Neighborhood Zones. We've looked through both of those ordinances and think that some of the language could be made more objective. The use tables are confusing, the development standards are, again, something that I think conventional zones may be able to deal with. And the architectural review is, I think, a, a step that is, is probably positive for those communities, but that some clarification of what those styles are is appropriate. And I think at least Stagecoach is interested in, in doing that. The Night Sky ordinance, staff has, has brought up, and I think it's come up in public meetings as well, that they can be revised, they can be a little stricter than the Night Sky statute that the state has. And, and so we want to look at that. Short-term rental, if accessory dwelling units become allowed throughout the county, we want to be sure that that ordinance reflects that they ought not be just short-term, that it's intended for long-term residents and more affordable housing. And regarding excavation and grading, right now, it's written as a component of the building code, and we frankly just need to talk with staff to understand if it should be part of the unified code or, or not. Next slide, please. And next. So our next steps are to complete the report and, and then make that available to continue our public engagement activities. As mentioned, we've got several stakeholder meetings scheduled for this week, and we'll have more coming up. The detailed outline of code, which, which Caitlin mentioned, the organization, but then go further, and then to embark on a code rewrite. So that is our presentation, and we stand for any questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Beale?
Yes. First of all, thank you for the presentation. So we all agree, I think, that transparency is super important to hear in the process. And most recently, I've seen a couple of flyers posted on our windows here on meetings with developers and contractors or something to that sort. But I didn't see it in our, in our website, folks, and I didn't see it in the media, I didn't see it out there. And so I, for one, have received phone calls from constituents wondering what was going on, you know, trying to figure out how did they jump in, you know, how did they participate? So my question is, how did, who, who and how did we provide a list of who needed to, to reach out to in regards to developers and contractors? Do, does someone want to speak to that? You know, we need to certainly answer the questions of the constituents. So can you please shed some light?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Beale. So basically what we did was we sent a mass email out to all the contractors that have been pulling permits for various years. Everybody that we have email addresses, we have flyers posted all over. We did not put it on the website, you are correct, but we have been sending out that verbal communication. We're right now focusing just on the contractors right now, and then we're going to open it up to the entire public later on for public meetings, at which time we will be having it in the newspapers, social media, and whatnot, the same way we did with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. And I believe, if I can, continue. So there's a list of stakeholders. Is there, is that list provided somewhere so folks can find out what you mean by stakeholders? Like what stakeholders, like for example, neighborhood associations, have they been contacted?
Yes. We have already had a meeting with members from Upper Las Colonias. We did contact El Prado Historic District and also Los Rancho's. Two both did not respond to us. And I have just spoken with Mr. Sacks and, and Ms. Patterson, and we'll get together again after this meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. And also, we all know that our county is wide, and certainly I, as I represent district, or shall I say District Three encompasses tres piedras and Carson, I did get some calls from those folks as to whether or not should they be trying to jump into that developers' and contractors meeting. And so I did reach out to your office, and I talked to Andy Jones, and he was very, very helpful. But there are folks out there that are a little bit confused as to whether or not they maybe should be there, they feel like maybe they were left out. And so I just want to make sure, folks, that as we move forward, that we don't give that impression that we're not transparent. And so I, I know everyone's working hard on trying to put this forward, but I just want to remind us that we don't, we don't leave anyone out. And, you know, I think we need to make sure that there's a, a little bit more awareness out there, because this is going to be super, this is super important. If we don't get it right from the very get-go, meaning being inclusive with, with the community, we're going to miss the boat, and we don't want to do that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Beale, you're absolutely right. And I just want to let you all know that we're not trying to leave anybody out, we're just trying to get this as a process, so that way we're targeting specific individuals right now, and eventually it'll be open up to the entire public. But anybody that wants to come to these meetings are more than welcome. We're not going to say, no, 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 you can't be here right now. So anybody that is interested is more than welcome to come.
Okay. The, the only problem is that they're not aware of it until after the fact, and it's, it feels like they're left out.
Correct. But we are going to be having a series of meetings, so this isn't the end of it. There's, there's still going to be many more public meetings. So once it's open for the entire public, again, we'll make sure that flyers are posted at post offices. Again, the same resources that we used for the comprehensive plan is going to be the same avenue that we go to get that word out for these public meetings.
So just one last question for now. Stakeholders. If there's a list of stakeholders, and I know someone has obviously identified who those stakeholders, there, can anyone join those meetings? I mean, if you're trying to target neighborhood associations, I know there's only two that are, that are listed here because apparently they went through the entire process, but there were many others that were working really hard on getting there. And I think that the county, you know, and no, I'm not trying to disown Taos County, but I think we didn't continue. They didn't, there wasn't a person that continued with them, so hence why they never completed the process. And so we don't want to totally dismiss that they were, or, for example, Rancho's Neighborhood, which is a well-known organization and, or neighborhood association, I mean, they were going through the process. We just, they didn't get to that finish line, but they still are very inclusive of that community.
And so the people that we are already aware that they were starting that process, we are going to be contacting them when the time is appropriate, so that way we could have those meetings with them. But also other individuals that we might have missed, if they attend the public meetings and reach out to us, we'll make sure that we meet with them individually as well. And the stakeholder list that we're utilizing is the stakeholders that were identified during the comprehensive plan revisions.
Okay. And I said, I, that was, can I ask a little more? Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to understand the conventional zoning and how will that address the neighborhoods? Neighborhood associations are very inclusive of the community, and, and that's the design ultimately. I'm just wondering how the conventional zone will encompass that inclusiveness? How are we going to, if we were to go that direction? How do we take care of community in that regard?
Thank you, Commissioner. And Mark, I'd ask for your help as well, but the conventional zone districts are residential by various densities, which is similar to what Stagecoach and Las Colonias have at this time. And so they may be the basis for the districts that we create for application in other community areas as they would be zoned at this time or at a later time past this project. The mixed-use zone in the highway corridors is one that we've heard a lot of interest in to allow for more commercial development. They wouldn't have to go through the special review process, it would be, unless they were large projects, and then as a major project, they would probably go through that as a conditional use or something that requires additional public review. What am I missing? Employment, sometimes called industrial, is an important zone that would allow for, for businesses of various types. And that's a traditional, that, that, excuse me, is a conventional zone category as well. Does that start to answer?
I, I think so. I think I've got the gist. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beale. Anybody else? Commissioner Brash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation this morning. Appreciate it from, from all of you. I just have a comment and a question, which my question might have already been, been answered. Because we do have two neighborhood zones already, I think, Rachel, what you said is that those folks are already being included in the process. If they're affected most by this because they already kind of have been given their, a certain amount of authority, are they being included with respect to any changes that might affect what they've got in place?
Commissioner Brash, with the echo, I didn't catch the, the last part. I'm sorry.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that there's a plan for those two neighborhood associations that already do have zone, a certain degree of zoning authority, that they're being included in the process as they'll be among those areas most or the areas most affected.
Commissioner Brash, yes, excuse me. Andy Jones and I talked with the president of Stagecoach and kind of set up that there would be some continuing involvement, that the president is thinking about a survey of people who live, residents in that area that we could help hopefully coordinate with this process. And, and I'd love to do more with Las Colonias as well. We've not yet had a meeting with some of the officials of the Las Colonias Neighborhood Association yet, and need to have that, as Rachel said, it would be scheduled.
Yeah. Again, just want to, to kind of to echo Commissioner Beale's point, just want to make sure that those folks in particular are included. And then my comment is simply, two huge issues that we're facing now are the housing crisis and the risks presented by the climate crisis. And this work that we're doing together offers a huge opportunity and tools to address those two major issues. So my request is simply a plea to please keep those things in mind, and let's do what we can to address both of those two areas because they're not going away anytime soon. And we won't be doing this process again anytime soon. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brash. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, is, is there anything in your assessment of the code at this point about the recommendations for density, especially in new developments like subdivisions and PUCs? The reason I'm asking the question is, we attended a session last week in Santa Fe regarding wildfire mitigation, wildfire risk, and they seem to be recommending lower density in residential areas because of that. Is, is that something we should be thinking about, is what the density should be in these new developments?
Commissioner Romero, that's, that's a great thing for us to consider, and we don't have at this point a proposal for...
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Maybe I should stand back. I don't know. Is it easy to hear? So Commissioner Romero, that's a, a great thing for us to be looking at, to, to be flagged for. And we, we don't have a pre-set of, of density requirements, but in wildlife urban areas, that's, that's something that we should examine. I might mention, too, that infrastructure is so critical to have higher densities. So, you know, that, that continues to be a riddle in a way for figuring out where water, whether it's municipal or a water and sanitation district is available, where sewer is available, where it might be expanded, extended if it's outside municipalities. So you can't have very high density without municipal infrastructure utilities.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I've seen no other questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving right along to 8B, an update on wildfire risk reduction and watershed protection efforts across Taos County. Welcome, J.R.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm going to find the right distance for this microphone so that I'm not creating any sort of feedback, otherwise hopefully. Appreciate you all having me here this morning. My hope in this presentation...
Are you moving back and forth on it like that? Set there, just pull back.
Where do you want me to stand? I'm wiggly, too. I had a lot of caffeine this morning. Thank you. I know you all have a long agenda, so I'm going to try and cover a lot of information relatively quickly. I've also invited some folks representing various groups involved in the work that I'm going to describe today. So we'll be coming up, and so we're going to do our best to stay as the same distance from the microphone the whole time. And so if you can please go to the next slide. Thank you. And that slideshow button in the top right might help you out. Great. So what we're going to cover today is a very brief background. So what we're going to cover today is a very brief background on the county's Forest and Watershed, Watershed Health Program. I'm the director of that program, at least in title. We're going to talk about the project work that's been completed just in the last couple of years, from a variety of funding sources that the county has received, that I've helped oversee, but that I've had a lot of assistance from the folks who'll come up and speak to you today. And of course, I want to talk briefly about the 2025 fire season, which we know is going to be a doozy. So next slide, please, Anisa. Again, I'm covering a lot of information today, but the blueprint, the foundation for this work can really be described in the 2022 Taos County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. This is a plan that was updated, it was the third update to that plan. The county has been at the forefront in the state and arguably in the region when it comes to not just planning and creating good documents, but actually implementing work based on those documents. So anyone who has questions about this work, or wants to see rationales for where and why we're working, this is a great document to look at. It's available on the website, it's also available on the state forestry website. Next slide, please, Anisa. All right. Quick Forest Ecology 101. Fire is not new to northern New Mexico. In fact, it's a necessary process in our forests. It's part of what kept the forests healthy for eons, and it's helped maintain balance in the ecosystems. For millennia, lightning strikes would start fires in our dry forests in Taos County. Those fires would burn across the ground, as is shown in the slide here, and it would maintain what we call the understory of the forest. It would clean up leaf litter and duff, it would burn small shrubs, and it would control the amount of undergrowth that was coming up under the more mature trees. That's good fire. Next slide, please, Anisa. We screwed up, especially the federal government, when it started getting really good at putting out wildfires. The idea was, we need to protect our timber resources, so let's put out every fire that starts. And naturally, what happened is we allowed for this crazy buildup of fuels, degrees exponentially beyond what was normally in the woods. Not only does that create those ladder fuels, that's those mid-story trees that you see growing up, that carry fire into the canopies of the trees and devastate forests, rather than allowing fire to maintain the condition, but it also makes those forests stressed, more susceptible to disease and to bug outbreaks, which we're also seeing. Next slide, please, Anisa. So this is what fire looks like now in northern New Mexico. This is the Hermit's Peak Cap Canyon, up above Rosiala. Next slide, please, Anisa. After the fire, that's what standard placing fire looks like in the Gaienas watershed. That's Hermit's Peak in the upper left. Next slide, please, Anisa. And the fire is only half the battle. As soon as rain hits those nuked-out slopes, you get flash floods, you get debris flows, and you have issues related to water quality, not just for months or years, but often for decades. The city of Las Vegas is grappling with that now, and if we were to have a fire in Taos County, we would no doubt experience something similar. So our work is intended to prevent that, or at least mitigate the effects of that. Next slide, please, Anisa. Our work also acknowledges that we have built in areas that are fire-prone and where we have this same fuels problem. And so not only are we trying to protect watersheds, but we're trying to protect people's houses, in part because they're obviously important values, but they also are the county's tax base. In places where entire subdivisions burn, it's come reevaluation time, the county can often see changes in the way taxes work for people and even lose revenue in some cases. Next slide, please. That 2022 update to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan went community by community and identified the areas that we not just felt, but actually diligently scored and ranked, that we considered to be the highest risk. That table on the left, which I know is teeny tiny, shows all 64 communities that we identified and how they rank, high, medium, and low, but also with an associated score. And then the map at the right shows those same communities spread out across the county, overlaid with data that we got from the state, showing in Taos County where is the highest risk of a wildfire in any given year. Those two things, the wildfire risk and the communities at risk, guide the work that I'm going to talk about here right now. Next slide, please. So our goal today is not to ask this commission for anything, we've asked you all for a lot, it's to report back on what we've accomplished so far and what we intend to accomplish in the next year. These four sources of funding have been the primary pots of money that I've been digging into, to do as much work as we possibly can. And again, not just to do thinning, but to do thinning in a way that it acknowledges traditional uses in the forests here, it contributes to the local economy, and it has the ecological benefit that we all know we need. I'm going to stall while Anisa checks on the door. Thank you. This first map shows the area around Hondo, the little skinny yellow line going up into the mountains, that's the highway towards Taoski Valley, that's Highway 150. Anything in yellow is work that the county is implementing using funding from the Carson National Forest as part of our Good Neighbor Agreements. That includes work that's hired local contractors, like one who's going to speak here momentarily. It includes a Lainero program that the Oro Hondo de Arriba Community Land Grant is running, and it also includes the work that we did up towards Taoski Valley, mostly as a public safety project, to make it possible for folks to get out of there in the event of a fire, hopefully. The work in purple is funding that came from the state of New Mexico through Taos County to do work at the D.H. Lawrence Ranch, owned by the University of New Mexico, as well as a big chunk just south of the ranch on the Carson National Forest. That'll be fuel wood available to the community where it's accessible. And all of the work that was done at the ranch included about 700 cords of wood that we delivered to Taos Pueblo as part of that project. And the green are the projects that are being completed or are planned as part of this green corridor appropriation that the county got a couple of years ago from the legislature. That green corridor, we drew the line to include more or less the Rio Hondo watershed going up towards Taoski Valley. There's a couple of folks who I'd like to bring up. Ellen, do you mind coming up first? Ellen Ebersol is with the Turley Mill Homeowners Association. We're using some of that green corridor funding to create a fuel break on the road that goes into that subdivision. It's a one-way-in, one-way-out road. It also provides a fuel break to keep and control fire from going further up into the watershed and hurting other parts of the ecosystem. I wanted to highlight Ellen and I invited her today because not only is the county working with her homeowner association to do that work, but they represent the best possible proactive community when it comes to volunteering their time and effort to recruit homeowners to do what they can do on their own to protect their homes and collectively make a bigger difference. Thanks, Ellen.
Good morning. I'm very grateful to be here and grateful to the myriad numbers of people and county organizations that have made this project possible. In March, we are embarking on a firebreak thinning project along our almost four miles of road. It will make it safer in many, many ways, and it will allow the homeowners association to go forward with maintenance issues, water retention, erosion control, and incentivizing the homeowners and landowners to continue this work on their own property. We will be upgrading our community map for our FireWise project and identifying the properties that have been thinned and treated, and that helps the fire people attend to those issues. We'll also be looking at further firebreak possibilities within the community, old roads, old driveways that may be able to be used as firebreaks. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ellen. Another person I'd like to bring up is Jamie Tedesco. Jamie owns and operates a local thinning business that the county has hired for a couple of projects, including most recently 20 acres that they've been at the El Salto Alawa Association, accomplishing some really good work in some really tough terrain. I was just hoping Jamie could speak to his business briefly and the effect that this work can have on the local economy and to provide local jobs.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Tedesco. I own Woodsharks. We're a local natural resource company and thinning contractor here. I appreciate your partnership, working together to make our community safer. A little bit about our company, we started in 2017. We have 10 part-time and full-time seasonal workers that work with us to implement this work in the community. So thank you again for making a difference in the economy. We do provide all of our services here locally in the region and purchase all of our equipment locally, so this does have a trickle-down effect to the economy with everything that we do. But the bottom line is removing some of this fuel in the community. And so that's the main thing that we do, and we work with JR and all the partners to identify those core areas that are targets, so to speak, things like wild urban interfaces, to remove that vegetation and fuel load. The graphic he showed you just recently was really powerful. I think it shows clearly the difference between a healthy forest and a not-healthy forest. I appreciate that JR also mentioned the flooding. That's something we need to be aware of. I know there's a lot of talk about fire with what you're seeing on the news now, and that's very important, but the second part of that is also the flooding and soil and erosion control, because that stuff can come down our drainages and arroyos and acechias and really cause lots of problems and hurt our water as well, and it's also a safety threat. So that's what we do in the community. He alluded to the fact that we just did 70 acres of fire reduction in the Viescondido area, and also we just completed 21.5 acres above El Salto. These are really important things, especially for the homeowners that live right there. As you guys know, a lot of these areas have homes in the area, and they're concerned. So whatever we could do to remove the vegetation, keep water in the ground through our soil and erosion efforts is very important. And I did want to make one distinction. Some people do piling with the material that's cut, and it's controlled at a later time, but we've opted in many instances to do what they call lop and scatter. And that's strategically done, because especially on slopes, what it does is if you contour that lop and scatter, it slows the water down. We do have large rain events, as we often do in the summertime, with monsonal activity, and that'll retain that water and slow it down, and it'll sink. We have a mantra, we say, "Slow, sink, and spread the water." So if you could slow, sink, and spread the water with the clippings from the trees and do a lop and scatter format, it's a win-win for everybody involved. So that's typically how we operate with what we cut and, and contour on the hillsides, and by sinking and spreading and slowing that water down, it's safer and it creates actual temperature changes underneath the, the lop and scatter that's on the ground, and so it retains that water and it makes it safer. So that's a little bit about our company, and I appreciate your partnership and everything that we're doing together to make a difference in our county. Yeah.
Thanks, Jamie. Anisa, if you're able to go to the next slide, please. Here's a couple of examples of finished projects. This is the D.H. Lawrence Ranch. If you think back to the slides of good and bad I showed you, this is an example of taking out most of those small trees that exist under the taller trees, and then you can see in the foreground that small little clump of young ponderosa pine, that's what we're aiming for, that's the next generation of forest, so it grows in pockets. And this project was a beautiful example of how we can move a forest from not just really imperiled and threatened, but actually a stand that's very healthy and improves the ecological function, the habitat for wildlife, and also water infiltration, as Jamie was mentioning. Next slide, please, Jamie. Here's some of that steep terrain that Jamie and his crew just finished at El Salto. We've been working and chipping away at that property since 2015, and, you know, repeated entries, repeated treatments, often in the same places, starting to make a really big difference in the condition of that forest. Next slide, please, Anisa. So moving towards the center of the county with this funding, again, the yellow is money that Taos County has through the Good Neighbor Agreement. The blue is a standalone, what's called a non-federal lands grant. We received a grant from the state to do work in the Viescondido area, which ranks, I believe, second or third in the county in terms of risk. Jamie and his crew completed 70 acres there last fall, and we have now until the end of December to spend out that money. We're realizing that $400,000 was not nearly enough. We're going to be going back to the well, probably repeatedly, in order to do the work in those areas in Viescondido, but also Taos Canyon that needs to get done. The yellow work up Taos Canyon at the top of the map is postage stamp examples of treatments in strategic locations, usually on ridge lines and in places where we know fire is most likely to spread from the highway or to spill over into the Blue Lake Wilderness on Taos Pueblo, which is kind of a worst-case scenario for not just the tribe, but for the town of Taos as well. One of the projects at the bottom left, that's the Cristo de la Serna Forest Mayoromo Program. That's about 70 acres, that's been cut up into one-acre units, and the land grant has issued that to community members to go thin. The other Forest Mayoromo is that yellow little nugget at the top of the map in the center. That's the Acequia del Sur de Canyon, that's been operating that program for the last year, and Vicente and Joe Fernandez are here. Vicente is the Forest Mayoromo on that program, and I just wanted him to speak to the successes that you guys have had in the last year and describe the project a little bit.
Morning, Commissioners, Chairman Hill, staff, members of the public. My name is Vicente Fernandez, I'm the Mayoromo for the Rio Fernando Canyon Lainero Project. This project is a 130-acre wildfire mitigation project. What we've done so far, I wish we were a little further along, we'd have 21 acres of those done, and this coming month, we're probably going to have another recruiting program, so we can recruit more Laineros to the project. We've done a lot of work, as you saw in JR's slides, we took down a lot of the ladder trees that are in the forest, because we need, as a Lainero, and also as a Mayoromo for an Acequia, a watershed is the lifeblood of the agricultural community. Economic impact, cultural and traditions impact, the fire would have on this valley would be too great to even think about. So one of these programs that we're doing now is the community is taking, making the effort to clean out these areas. And I'm pretty sure there's other areas in southern Taos County that are doing the same. We're not here to ask for anything today. What we're here to do is to thank you for all your support that you and your staff have given us to make this project a success. We've done a lot, we're going to do a lot, and we hope to finish by this coming year. And hopefully, there'll be more projects available for us, for the community, so all our community, our Laineros can get involved. What we've also done is, a lot of the wood that we're cutting or taking out, we're donating to needy people that need wood. Instead of piling it up somewhere, we're taking it directly from the forest to the person that needs it. So it's just neighbors helping neighbors. And of course, the community, the commission, the Forest Service have been outstanding. And also thanks to JR for all he's done for us. We really appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vicente. Anisa, the next slide, please. So through the Good Neighbor Agreement that the county has with the Carson, we're running four of those Forest Mayoromo programs. That's Vicente's Acequia and a couple of partner acechias in Canyon, that's the Cristo de la Serna Land Grant, the Oro Hondo de Arriba Community Land Grant, as well as the Santa Barbara Land Grant. We've worked out a lot of the kinks in those programs, and it's a, it's a model that we've had a lot of success in replicating, and that the response has been overwhelmingly positive towards. Next slide. There's Vicente, looking very noble in the forest. Next slide, please. And here's a shot of the work that the county is taking on in southern Taos County, that's the Piñasco area in the upper left of that map. We have a couple of projects, the smallest one on the bottom left, that's the, what's known as the Ojitos Forest Mayoromo, that's the Santa Barbara Land Grant, that's taken that project on. And then we have that area, which is just south of Picadis Pueblo, that's more work That's more work for contractors like Jamie that we expect to take on this year. A couple of things to point out on this map. The good news is that the two projects in yellow aren't the only work happening in that area. That's just the work that Taos County is doing. There's a fair number of acres happening in the area around Trampas and Albaia on the National Forest and off to help complement this work. The bad news is that the area that mostly dominates the right side of that map has seen little to no work in the last four or five decades, and that's a major threat, as the chairman knows, and it's not, as I said, to the Rio Pueblo and to the communities downstream of there. The Carson is doing the nepe necessary to accomplish some of the work in that watershed, but that's an area where it's glaringly obvious that we're missing the mark. And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, the other area we're missing, of course, is up north. There just hasn't been nearly the amount of work and attention paid to the areas around Cuesta and all the way up to Costilla. It's on our radar, but we're getting to other places as fast as we can. Next slide, please, Anissa. All right, let's see if this works. These are two short videos. In addition to the cutting, the agreements that we have are paying volunteer firefighters who are qualified to go be part of prescribed fires. I was on this particular prescribed fire in Ojos Arco. We were burning piles with a couple of other volunteers from Taos County. There's still a couple of things. One, it helps the Carson National Forest, which is in charge of these prescribed burns, to have more resource, more resources on hand when they're doing the fires. It also helps alleviate some of the concern that local folks might have when they see not just federal employees out there, but often people who they know from their communities, engines, from their local fire departments, that kinds of thing. We're all well-aware of the risks associated with prescribed fire after the Hermit's Peak Calf Canyon, but the unfortunate truth is we need to figure out how to use fire as a tool. And the more local people we have trained and experienced on prescribed fire and on fire suppression, the better off we're going to be in the long run. Sometimes... There's another shot of that prescribed fire, the same one. You can see we've burnt small trees underneath, the big healthy trees behind. That's a very healthy forest stand at the southern end of the track. Next slide, please, Anissa. All right, so we're using the funding that the county's received to hire locals to do professional thinning. We're using that funding to have de Nieros. We're also using that funding to do work like this video is going to show, in partnership with the Southern Water District. So, effectively, we're trying to create some power, some monitoring crews. When that works, it's the county receiving funding from the Forest Service. We have an LDU with Taos on board, so we're getting money available from Taos on a monitor. So, a lot hires those interns to do work that was shown in the video. It's a fantastic program that provides career highlighting for people in Taos County interested in natural resources, but the data they're collecting is used to develop the treatment prescription that Vicente takes out and enhances the de Nieros to do the work. So, it's kind of this beautiful cycle. So, Grace, you know, I'm taking for this government and it's all that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I love seeing that video and so much that y'all could see that. It brings me so much pride to see those students engaged in this work, and I wanted to speak a little bit about it. So, I work for the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District as the Forest Health and Monitoring Program Manager. We have a twofold approach with our monitoring program with two objectives. So, the first objective is to empower students and youth to engage in management problems around Taos County and to engage in work opportunities that are available. The Carson faces many management problems, and our youth are well-aware of those problems. In fact, they're inundated from seeing the fires in Los Angeles to the flooding in Asheville. Youth are aware of it, and they want to engage. They want to be given pathways to create solutions and be a part of that solution and not just sit here and wonder, "What can I do? What's happening to my world, and how can I engage?" So, part of what our program does is create opportunities for those students to be empowered and actually contribute to positive impacts around our county and taking care of our public lands. Students are aware of the ecological issues that we face. They're inundated, and they want to participate. The second part of our program, the goal of Taos SWCD is to create land stewards. And so, we create these land stewards through education and mentorship and this monitoring program. The Taos SWCD Student Monitoring Program fosters connection to the land as well as builds hard skills in natural resources. For example, students can walk away from our program and are qualified for a myriad of positions in natural resource management around the county, from positions with the Soil and Water Conservation District to the Forest Service to BLM, even working for contractors or that sort of thing around the county. So, we want to encourage students and let them know that they don't have to leave northern New Mexico in order to have fulfilling and important careers in natural resources and contribute to the community in meaningful ways. We provide high-quality data to the Carson National Forest, as well as JR mentioned and Vicente mentioned. Our data is not only, you know, feel-good for these students, the data is very important. And so, it contributes to existing data pools that the Carson has of ongoing monitoring, so we can really understand the impact of this thinning work that's happening and engage in long-term ecological monitoring to really understand what is the state of the forest now and where is it going, and what can we do to best manage it for our future generations. The Taos SWCD Monitoring Program provides benefit to the entire community, and I just wanted to highlight that it really can make an impact on these students' lives. For example, I was hired as a monitoring crew lead three years ago at the district as just a part-time student employee, and I now run the program. And so, I think that that really speaks to the importance of this program in creating careers here in Taos County. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Anissa, I think I have a couple more slides, please. The monitoring program has maybe my favorite program, because a lot of the students that we hired when the thing started in 2018, 2019, I'm now seeing them as employees on the Carson National Forest and with New Mexico State Forestry. And these are people who grew up here, really care about this place, and now are in positions to help it out. All right, for you folks who care about dollars and cents, we've spent about $200,500 million from those four pots of money in the last couple of years through Taos County. We got about 2.7 to go in the next year, year and a half, and in total, we'll have done about 2,600 acres. It's important to note, when you look at those maps, our goal is not to touch every single acre. It's not feasible, but it's also not necessary. The best science right now suggests if you can get 20% of the landscape treated in really strategic locations, you reduce and you mitigate the impacts of big fire by as much as 80%. So, we're trying to be as targeted and get as much return on that investment as we possibly can. Next slide, please, Anissa. Okay, here's the bad news. The ERC, we're not even going to go into what that means, just know that if the number's high, it's bad. This map was yesterday, and for our area, we are in the 50th percentile for what's known as the energy release component. It's essentially saying, "How dry is the fuel out in the forest right now?" Normally, we're at about a 10% to 20%. So, this is the kind of numbers that we see far later in the season, and this is obviously because of how dry it's been this winter. Next slide, please, Anissa. Unless things change significantly, the smartest people in the country who predict wildfire seasons expect basically all of the state of New Mexico to be in significant wildfire potential by April. That's about a couple months ahead of schedule, and God knows what they're going to find come May or June if things don't change. So, I bring this up for a couple of reasons. One, it means we're trying to get as much work done now as we possibly can, because it's very likely that come April, May, it's not going to be safe to work in the woods. And B, the work that we're trying to accomplish is in preparation for seasons like this, but there's only so much we can do, and so, this is going to be a buckle-up kind of fire season. Next slide, please, Anissa. The county, the Emergency Office of Emergency Management, and my cordova and the fire operations are doing what they can to prep for the fire season. I want to take this opportunity to encourage homeowners like Ellen and the folks that we work with in the Firewise Communities and elsewhere to take it upon themselves to do some preparatory work now. The State Forestry Division on that website has really good, very easy-to-understand information about small things that people can do to prep their home and their properties for this upcoming fire season. And then, unfortunately, that brochure on the ref on the right essentially describes, "This is what you need to have ready in the event of an evacuation." And it's not unreasonable to be thinking about that now in late January, early February in anticipation of what's likely to be a pretty wildfire season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It has been a really great pleasure to work with you all and with the staff here at Taos County on these projects. It's been extremely rewarding. I get to work with a lot of cool and very capable people, and thank you for your time this morning. I know you have a long agenda. Appreciate it.
Thank you, JR. Appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Gil.
Yes, I want to start by saying a big thank you to you, JR, Vicente, Joe, and all the folks that are involved in trying to make our forest safer. There's been so much conversation these days about not if, but then. And, you know, honestly, I know we, Commissioners, are certainly concerned about plan, what does the plan look like? And so, I'm just so grateful that you're here today to talk about, obviously, what you're doing out there. There's a lot of conversation within the county, and I know you're on it, to make sure that that plan is solid. We obviously can only plan, and it looks like we need to make sure we have a planning PC. But there's been a lot of conversation about the space between our homes and our surroundings. I know this is sort of like a forest plant, but most recently, I had a conversation with a neighbor, and I live in the green belt where the fields are, and they're seeing cracks in the ground. So, that's a bad sign. We all know that. We just don't have that moisture. And as it's time to clean the acechias and get ready for clean-out de Nieros, we always have that concern that a field can catch fire, which goes on and on and on. So, I'm glad we're having conversations. I hope that the public is paying attention, doing all they can do to make sure that they have those defensible spaces, but that we're also, they'll know that we have, we are having these conversations. We want to have, make sure that when this happens, there is a plan and that the entire community, all leaders, all entities are communicating and getting prepared for it. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Rush.
Thank you, Chairman Masvidal. And thank you, JR, and everyone who's here, the partners to do the work. I think we were, Commissioner Gil and I were in office in our fourth month when we signed up for the Good Neighbor Agreement with you. So, it's amazing today to see how that work has been done and where. My question is, you said that the Good Neighbor Agreement, that is primarily federal money that is coming through Taos County, correct? And that there's still 2.73 million to be spent. Is that federal money at any risk of not getting to us?
Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioner, no. That money is obligated. It's ours, and unless there's an act of Congress, it's not an act. I don't see it going away anytime soon. We intend to spend that money as quickly as we can, in part because of the unpredictability of some, not necessarily the political situations, but at the agency level, when you have any change in administration. And also, because we know, you know, if we can spend that money, it makes it possible for us to go back and ask for more. So, no, I don't anticipate that money going anywhere.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
JR, thank you. Appreciate all the work you're doing. I know it's not easy, you know, for coming to squeeze in the last 30 years of what hasn't been done in a short period of time. And last week, we experienced, you know, a neighbor was burning along the edges and we picked up, and within 30 minutes, it spread five properties out. That's how quick, that's how dry we are. So, I'm not looking forward to the fires at all, because we don't know what's in the works and after seeing what's going on in Los Angeles County, it's very concerning. So, thank you for everything that you guys are doing, and anything else that we can help with, please let us know.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Definitely will. Thank you.
Chair, I'd like my motion to take a break. Let's do maybe five minutes or if you're good.
The motion to take a break, second, I'd like to hear a medal. And I'm sure, please, all of us.
Commissioner Gil. And Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Rush.
Yes.
And Chair Romero.
Yes.
We'll be back in about five minutes. We'll be back in about five minutes. We have a motion to go back into December. It's been a motion by Commissioner Rush.
Thank you again.
And then with Commissioner Romero. Madam President, please follow.
Commissioner Pedjo? Yes? Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yeah.
Chair Masvidal?
Yes.
Moving right along, let's go to 98. Presentation to Taos County Board of County Commissioners, Consider Acceptance or Denial of Agreement to Assure Completion of Infrastructure and Standby Letter of Credit for P. M. Y. R. D. S. G. S. P., Advocate Owner of Upper Penny Subdivision. Andy Jones?
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
And the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out a typo in this one and the next one. It's not a standing letter credit, it's a standby letter credit.
Okay, just by, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
There is, my three. No, there are three.
What needs to be, okay, there we go.
Normal touch it. It was odd, don't touch it.
Are you there?
Yes.
They're great.
I know.
Okay, good morning again. Yesterday, we're bringing you this, for your consideration, this agreement to assure completion of infrastructure and standby letter of credit for Compa Penney Subdivision, which we approved on December 10, 2024. So, included in your packet are the agreement to assure completion of infrastructure, the applicant standby letter of credit, engineers' estimates of, estimate for the cost of infrastructure that still needs to be completed. This, as a reminder, I know we've done these in the past. When a developer does a subdivision, they have two options for their infrastructure. They can, they can pay for everything upfront, and during that time, when they're putting the infrastructure in, they're not allowed to sell the lots. So, they don't get to sell the lots until all the infrastructure is in place. In this scenario, under the agreement to assure completion of infrastructure, they enter into this agreement with the county. They have this standby letter of credit through the bank that provides for resources if the developer just mysteriously disappeared, you know, went to Aruba or something, and then the county could draw from that letter of credit to complete the and then the county could draw from that letter of credit to complete the infrastructure. In this scenario, the developer can go ahead and sell the lots and they can kind of fund the infrastructure as they go with the proceeds from selling the lots. So also in your packet is my recorded decision that was recorded at the county clerk's office. The applicant for Copper Penny Summary Subdivision is Timo Yarovitz-Guttspeed. She's represented by her agent, Mr. Mark Yarovitz. The subdivision complied with all the requirements of Section 6 of Ordinance 2005-8, the Taus County Subdivision Regulations, and the acceptance of this agreement of, to assure completion of infrastructure and standby letter of credit will satisfy the requirements of Section 6.2.19 and provide assurance that the remaining infrastructure will be installed. Once the infrastructure is installed, the applicant will provide a letter from their engineer that certifies that all the infrastructure is in place. We will typically do a site visit at that time to verify that the infrastructure is in place. If there's any need for public works to do a site visit, they'll do one as well. And once we're able to make that determination, we'll come back to you to terminate this agreement and release the standby letter of credit. So this is just the first step. So if you should choose to accept the agreement and standby letter of credit, the applicant will be released from the, yes, they'll be released when everything's put in place. I went off script, sorry. But I stand for any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, where is Copper Penny Subdivision located?
So this one is located off of Camino Tortuga in Lower Los Colonias. So that's, you go up Rabbit Valley and all the way, it's the last road. It serves the properties that are adjacent to the pueblo land in Lower Los Colonias.
That's near the port.
Oh, okay. Yes.
That's okay.
Near Fertilaga. Anyone else? Zina, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to allow this process to happen.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Beal, seconded by Vice Chairman Romero. Madam Perp, please call roll.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Chairman Mascherini?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving right along to 9B, Presentation to Taus County Board of Commissioners. Considering acceptance or denial of agreement to assure completion of infrastructure and standby letter of credit for Mark Yarovitz-Guttspeed.
Yes, same process here. This is an adjacent summary subdivision, also off of Camino Tortuga, Forla subdivision, and same process, so.
With that being said, Chairman, I will make a motion to also approve the process.
Second. Been a motion by Commissioner Beal, seconded by Vice Chairman Romero. Madam Perp, please call roll.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Chairman Mascherini?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Moving right along to discussion and consideration decision regarding the approval of MMFA loan for Carson Fire District to construct a new fire station. Chief Cordova's not here, but.
Commissioner Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Chief Cordova was not able to attend this morning, so he sent me in his place. I am Deputy EMS Chief Corolla, and we are here requesting your consideration on authorization to proceed with the loan acquisition from New Mexico Finance Authority. Purpose of this loan is to build a new fire station for the Carson Volunteer Fire District. If you reference your package, they're on page three of the application which has been granted by MMFA. Total cost is going to be covered by the loan itself plus other public funds. The money's going to come from the fire protection funds. So the entirety of the loan will be liquidated over the term of 15 years using fire protection funds and nothing else. Should there be a balance, it was advised by Chief Cordova that it would be covered by the fire excise tax. So we wanted to have your consideration regarding this. I stand for any questions.
I do. Thank you for being here. Quick question. These are state fines.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, just making sure.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And with that being said, is there any other questions? Okay.
Commissioner Brash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Deputy Chief Corolla, for being here. Just a quick question, I think you answered this, but under the project summary on number three, for the question about ongoing, the funding of ongoing maintenance operation and replacement, it says this project can be funded by New Mexico Fire Protection Funds and it gets cut off. Is that supposed to be in the Taus County Fire Excise Tax?
That is correct. It would be covered if there was a balance, but we don't foresee a balance being left over once the loan is covered by the fire protection.
Thank you so much. And with, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's a resolution.
Right, so in your motion, if you could please reference that your motion to approve this item along with Resolution Number 2025-N, authorizing submission of a completed application for financial assistance project. As an oversight, that this is not included, but we're comfortable with the language and the, and the agenda because this gives the Commission the authority to approve it.
Right, okay. So with that, I will make a motion, restate my motion, to approve the MMFA loan for the Carson Fire District to construct a new fire station, and also to approve the Resolution Number 2025-9, authorizing approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance project approval to the New Mexico Finance Department.
I'll second.
Been a motion by Commissioner Beal, seconded by Commissioner Brash. Madam Perp, please call roll.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Chairman Mascherini?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along to 9B, Discussion and Consideration Decision Regarding Letter of Acceptance for Closeout of CDBG Funding Activities for Taus County Courthouse Project. Chris Mjell, if you can.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. We're here today to ask to close out our CDBG project at the Historic County Courthouse. We received $1 million of funding specifically to handle the ADA component of that particular project. Our general contractor in his invoices separated out the CDBG ADA component, so we can make sure those dollars are spent separately. As of December, all those dollars were spent down. Our architect has confirmed that those dollars were spent appropriately, and we're asking today for the Commission to accept the closure of the CDBG portion of the project.
Any questions? Zina, do I have a motion? Motion by, by Chairman Romero, second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Romero. Madam Perp, please call roll.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Chairman Mascherini?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along to contract agreements that will use bids. 10A, Discussion and Consideration and Decision Regarding the Authority with County Manager to Sign Final Negotiator Contract, TCC 2025-2, SA Contracting Company, Inc. The contract for repairs to be done to Rio Valencia Road on NM 150. Joe Fernandez.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, by the way. I'm seeking the approval for the contract for the construction of Rio Valencia. Really, it's been quite a while, and we're sort of excited to go to get this project started and get everything all taken care of in that area. I stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of granting, approval to grant authority of the County Manager to sign the final negotiated contract, TCC 2025-2. I will second that.
Been a motion by Commissioner Brash, seconded by Commissioner Beal. Madam Perp, please call roll.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Romero?
Yeah.
Chairman Mascherini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to 10B, Discussion and Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval Contract, TCC 2025-1, Paradise Power Company, Inc., for the installation of EV charging stations and additional ready equipment at the Taus County Complex in the Royal Seco Community Center. Mr. Chris Mjell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, here today to ask approval of a $500,000 contract for PPC Solar. They're actually a local company that does EV charging stations statewide, but happened to be started and operated from here in Taus County. This grant was for the Green Corridor, so that's the ski valley area and the roads leading up. We decided that Camino de Pueblo leads up to the ski valley, so we're using that to define our ability to put charging stations out here. We're going to have fast chargers and then medium chargers as well, so folks that want to come and get a quick charge is wait around for five or 10 minutes or 15. Others that want to park their car and go have some lunch someplace can do that. There'll be three charging stations out here, three in a Royal Seco, and then we're going to do some extra preparation of pad sites in case we want to expand here on our parking lot. Can we ask approval?
Thank you, Commissioners. Any questions?
I do. So, because we've seen in the past where some of the wiring gets stolen or taken off of the EV chargers, I'm just wondering, at the community center in Arroyo Monto, will we be locking the gate and hide so those? I don't know if you're aware, I'm going to have ways to, to secure that, but curious. There's no gate. Will we be putting a gate?
At this point, we haven't discussed using the gate, but we have discussed putting up cameras as a way to address that issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of PPC 2025-1 with Paradise PPC for the installation of EV charging stations.
Motion by Commissioner Brash?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Beal. Madam Perp, please call roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Chairman Mascherini?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
I do want to mention, I know that it was already voted on, but we use the state pricing agreement in order to secure this contract, but we did talk to multiple entities that were on the state pricing agreement to make it competitive.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate that. Moving right along to Item 11, a consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull or you don't prefer? Do we have a motion? Been a motion to approve the consent agenda by Vice Chairman Romero?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Romero. Madam Perp, please call roll.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Chairman Mascherini?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving to Item 12, County Managers' Report of Matters.
Thank you, Chairman Mascherini and members of the Commission. I'll start by report that next week we will be reviewing the second quarter report. Paul Zanella will be presenting that. We interviewed for community schools director, only interviewed one individual. We'll probably be making an offer for the community schools director on that. Our academy records coordinator, she began work last week, and so she's hit the ground running. So we're not the only county, interfe other county managers last week. There's four, five counties that have the similar position. Eddie County said they have three people working on NIPRAS, and that's how inundated the counties are with a lot of patent requests. And so we follow suit, and it's something we've been working on for quite a while here. But it's been in budget, and we had commissioned and approved the job description last year. And then March 10th, as a reminder, is Taus County Day. The legislature's, we're still in the planning process of that. Since we've been sitting here this morning, we've got word, and if I forwarded you one email from Victoria Martinez from Representative Tennis Eletra Fernandez's office about the federal funding pause, and received an email from our Office of Emergency Management Director, Bobby Lucero, about the pause that's going to directly affect his office and the coordinator position. We haven't obviously had a chance to meet as a group and evaluate what other programs that may be affected. So right now, we know of one position that would be affected by the pause. There is already general fund money going to help fund that position, so we need to look at it. And so we'll have to meet this afternoon and start looking at all federal programs that may be affected by the, by this federal funding pause, as they're calling it. So the letters in your email, and like you said, right now, we know of one position that's going to be affected by it. And it's a critical position now during the fire season because Mark is critical. It's positions by Mark Ortega, and this position is critical for our emergency response planning efforts. So again, I know we already have some general fund money going to help fund his position. So we're going to look at this and what other federal funds. We'll meet this afternoon, finance and the management team and see what grants that this could be directly affected. And we already have our, Chris is already outreaching, that's why I was walking back to the room to see if this was going to affect our HERSA grants, our human resources. Can't remember what SNA stands for, but the funding that we're getting for the detox building, because we're starting to spend down on that grant. So I don't want to alarm anybody, but my date just changed this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, may I, while we're on this topic, may I ask a question? Brad, the HERSA money, the $3 million for the detox center, do we already have that in hand or no?
No, I thought we did, and I just went to confirm that we don't. It's the money at the, at the Historic County Courthouse that we have in hand.
Stayed on how this is going to affect us.
Right, so. So we're continuing to meet with the hospital on the new medical office building, so. This, Beal's looking to bid that out now in March, March, April timeframe, but right now, we're on schedule for that. Just got word from Modular and Spurding. We'll have the final pricing on the bond loan for the hospital. We'll have the final pricing on February 11th, so we'll be, sometime in March, we'll be able to release those funds to the hospital. We'll have to have an agreement on how that money's going to flow, so that's be something. We'll have to have an agreement on how that money's going to flow, so that's be something that attorneys will now begin working on as we get closer to funding further capital in reality. And I stand for questions.
Any questions, commissioners?
Andrew Hurdle, are we at this point taking steps to see if the state would assume responsibility for management of the veteran cemetery?
It would be up to the state if they would want to take that on. I know they're looking at it, there's been no.
Are we being proactive on that?
We're supplying the state any information that they request, so I'm not sure that I'm answering your question, but we're not actively pursuing to hand off the cemetery to the state.
Yeah, just to see what we are now, if we are being proactive to see if the state is willing to assume that responsibility.
Like I mentioned and like you heard at the governor's service for the dedication, we do have the $1 million. She is requesting that from the legislature to be part of the veteran services budget to operate. And like I mentioned to the commission, we do need to help advocate for that as it goes to the legislative committee, so it's a part of the governor's budget request, as they call it, executive budget request, so we do have that $1 million to help operate that budget and to help operate the cemetery through the veteran services department.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Hurdle. Appreciate the updates. Moving right along to item 13, new business to be considered at future commission meetings? Anything? Item B, commissioner announcement, is any announcement out there? None? Okay, now moving on to committee reports or community reports, Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area Board.
Okay, so first of all, I wanted to let you all know that I'm the vice president now of the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, and I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what we've been doing, but we also just got word that our funding, which we had spear for 10 years, Heinrich had helped us secure that. We're all, not just Northern Rio Grande, we've all had heritage areas throughout the United States. We just got word that our funding has been put on pause, so all the grants that we were, that we handed out to our communities are also, will be receiving letters that we're going to have to hold up. So really set to figure about that or even to have to report it. It also affects our staff, so we'll be needing to figure out whether we're going to go on a 32-hour because we do have some staff that cease to pay to pay operations, and so I'll let you all know when we get word on what's taking place. But I do want to give you an idea of what has taken place. We had just awarded $21,500 to, for there to preserve, this is more, sorry, to protect Pueblo, for a project designed to help preserve Tiwa as a spoken language within the pueblo. And so that was our most recent grant we handed out, which is now on pause. And we also have been doing some entrepreneurial training programs for artists and creators, and this has all been happening out of Los Pueblos. We had partnered, we had partnered up with Northern Community College and so with help of Senator Heinrich, we've been able to move this project along. And so another project that we've had going is the Second Annual Cultures and Creators Art Festival. That took place in September 13th through the 22nd. We did have an opening reception, 165 people that attended, and then thereafter 1,200 people viewed the show during this run. We also have been working on arts and cultural workshops that, that we're able to teach ramenios, which is papermaking and natural tees, ramenios, one and two, weaving, ceramics, traditional woodworking, woodcarving, writing, and more arts and cultural workshops. This has been a really, really well-attended workshop. And most recently, we also had the Rio Grande Ski Fiesta, Sky Fiesta, I'm sorry, Bloom Festival. We had a report, 1,500 books that came out to Los Pueblos. It was our first Bloom Festival and so we had planned on doing this next year, I hope we can, this year, excuse me, I hope we can see that through. We did apply for an EPA grant opportunity, which $19 million, which would be an environmental and climate justice community change grants program. And this, we are successful in management, we're doing fairly well in the process, so it's very competitive, but our application has been received as very compelling, so we have our fingers crossed there as well. This will serve for the areas of Santa Clara, Pueblo, okay, we have Pueblo, Rio Arriba, and so once again, I'll keep you all posted there. Another initiative that I thought was really interesting that I want you all to hear about was the Housing Initiative, New Mexico Build and Fry Program. And we've been working also with congressional, with the congressional delegation to create this program, and so hopefully we can move that forward. I guess this is it at this point, and I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. Any other announcements? I do have one I want to share with you guys. This is a better slicer than the Blue Bus Award, and I'll read this later, so you can know. Your colleagues earlier today notified the board of directors of my intention to retire as more central regional traffic district executive director. My account NCRTD employees among the very best in the profession, working day in and day out to create better transition systems and serve our many constituents daily. Your accomplishment, service, resilience in the face of the pandemic and other challenges show you our commitment to serving our constituents with a deep sense of purpose. When I retired, we marked nearly 46 years of professional service in local government, 14 years with the district as executive director, six years as an alternate to the NCRTD board of directors, in total 20 years of affiliation with the district. We were making these years more meaningful than I could have ever imagined. We have done so, we couldn't have done it without an unmatched salary. If we have done it without the extraordinary board of directors, who I consider one of the best leadership boards in New Mexico. Yet the work goes on. Over the next six months, I'll continue to work with you while the board of directors begins to work in selecting my successor, guided by our mission, vision, and values, supported by our daily work. I have heard every day that our organization will continue to create a better transition system every day, long after I've ended office term, with sincerity Anthony J. Martiaro. So just wanted to let you guys know that he'll be retiring. One of the other things he's working on, just so you guys know, it kind of affects all of us, he's working directly with Kate Carson on, with the new center going up here in Taos for the Blue Bus. You know, the plan was to move forward with electric buses, electric vans, and they went to Kate Carson asking for a rate, the original rate that was given to them unfortunately was going to, we're going back and forth negotiating the rate because the rate for the electric buses was going to increase our expenses by 65% over diesel buses. And right now, that's, that's, that's a concern for everybody because of it, going electrical if you can, save money, going electrical then why change, right? Why not just stay with diesel buses? So that's, that's something that they've been going back and forth with Kate Carson, electric, to try to finalize that, and that's going to affect all entities or whoever goes to electric in the future. And as you know, there's been an executive order to stop the mandate of electric vehicles in the U.S. law, and that's going to affect all this stuff going down the road, so anyway, those are, that's what I have. Anything else? Moving right along to item 14, discussion regarding the potential purchase of properties in this matter may be discussed in an executive session under the Open Meeting Act, which allows for discussion per purpose, purchase, acquisition, or disposal of those state property authorized by the public body. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to go on executive session to discuss items A and B.
Then a motion, there's a second. Motion by Commissioner Romano, seconded by Vice Chair Romano, and please call roll.
Yes. Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
I, Sheriff Romano? Sheriff Ross?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for the speakers. Thank you for the speakers.
Thank you for your presentation.
Ready, let me see. Please, okay. Um, do we have a motion to come back in?
Mr. Chairman, we should come out of executive session back into opposition.
I have second. Motion by Commissioner Mello, second by Commissioner Hill. Adam Curry, please call roll.
Commissioner Mello?
Yes.
Commissioner Romer?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Like, Sheriff Romero?
Yes.
Sheriff Mastodon, yes.
Yes. That means I want to turn this over to our Attorney Field.
Um, Mr. Chairman, only those matters discussed in motion to enter into executive session, in particular items of fourteen A and B were discussed through closed session and no final decision was made on either matter.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Rush, second by Commissioner Hill. Adam Curry, please call roll.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
And then Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Right, Sheriff Romero?
Yes.
Sheriff Mastodon, yes.
Yes. Thank you. Moving right along, um, going back to, uh... A, is there motion out there?
Attorney Field, I make motion to approve the purchase of five potential four acres of real property located on the west side of Wynder Road. When not self, the sovereign charter of Wynder Road, District Warding Road, the future use of a button fire rescue park. Two, office of emergency management. Three, fire and water city department. And further, to authorize the county manager to execute any paperwork needed to complete the purchase of the property.
Awesome, that's a lot of words. Would that be it, I'll go to the second half. Um, Adam Curry, please call roll.
Commissioner Mello?
Yes.
Commissioner Romer?
Yes.
Commissioner Rush?
Yes.
Right, Sheriff Romero?
Yes.
Sheriff Mastodon, yes.
Yes. Thank you, is there another? If not, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
At twelve oh six.
Twelve oh six. Then a motion and a second. All those are paper.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.